At seven thirty, we'll call the regular meeting of the Harlem Township zoning commission at order. And would you call a roll, please?
Yes, Mike Kavler.
Here.
Tony Manson.
Here.
Brittany Hopper.
Here.
Tom Need.
Here.
Lou Greenlaw.
Here.
And Alan Zaco's not here.
Okay. Well, for members of the public who are here, we will begin our regular meeting, do a little bit of business, and we do have a hearing scheduled at seven forty-five. After that hearing, and there are several more that are going to follow. So we will recess our regular meeting at seven forty-five and open the hearing on application HTCC twenty-five twelve requested by Ross K. Smith. So we'll get to that shortly. Looking at the rest of the agenda. Called the board members are present, the one person absent tonight is our alternate Alan Zaco. Mike Cannon is not here tonight, but our other employee for the township working with zoning as the zoning assistant, Ashley Zaruba. At this point, I will ask, is there anyone here that has a new application that they would want to submit for consideration for rezoning? All right, good. Going on for the review of the minutes. Let's see, I don't know, I haven't looked at these in terms of order. The one that's on top of my stack is August the fourth.
You sent updates at like, was that like three P M. today? Did you get Louie's updates or did you print these before Louie's update?
No, they were printed this morning.
I think when you want to make updates, could you please plan in the future to get those to Ashley at least the day before or the morning of, because if you wait till late in the afternoon, she's not going to be able to get them in.
Yeah, well, that's what that was why I asked.
It was a very small change, not it was inconsequential.
Okay.
Okay, so, but these were printed based upon the input that she had received and if everybody hadn't made that input as of last night or early this morning, she didn't print them that early because she was printing them when I came over about ten o'clock, I think. So I would urge you to make sure that you get those in so that everybody can have their comments included. Okay, with that in mind, you sounded like you may have had something that you wanted to change, and I don't know. Or if you were looking at what was online.
No, that wasn't my question. I I saw that Louie had made updates at around like three o'clock today, so I was asking if Ashley had.
I'm sorry, I misunderstood what you were saying.
When I do the final printing, I can do it from whatever he added. If he just says what he adds.
Yeah, but we need to know what it is that he added.
Yeah, but if he tells you.
So you can tell us, yeah, we'll let Louie tell us what additional changes.
Change was on the last set of minutes, so let's get through all the other ones first and then then we'll be fine.
Okay.
My comment was on the very last sentence on the last set of minutes, so we've got.
Oh, okay, so it was only in one place.
One small place. In consequence.
Very good. Well, the one that I'm looking at is the zoning commission regular meeting minutes for August the fourth. And Louie, didn't have any changes in that one?
Nope.
All right. And anyone else? Did you discover something? Since you last looked at them online? All right. Well, in that case, then can we have a motion to approve these minutes as corrected?
Approve the minutes of the regular meeting of August fourth, twenty twenty-five as corrected online.
Okay.
Thank you. Moved by Joni, seconded by Brittany. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Okay, approved. And the next set is hearing minutes for HTCC twenty-five oh nine. We did hold those hearings on August the fourth. But due to an oversight in terms of a missed, a date being incorrect in the notices sent to the adjacent property owners, we are opening those hearings up again tonight, provide any opportunity for adjacent property owners to comment. But these are the minutes from that first hearing. And since you did the corrections late, do you have anything in the minutes?
I have one single thing on the middle of the first page. Where it starts, Mr. Greenwell stated that the parcel number for number four, Joe Irwin should be spelled J O. Is her first name and Irwin is I R W I N.
I just changed your edit. So it'll be on the file.
That's it.
Okay, anything else? All right, again, a motion to approve these minutes then as corrected.
So moved.
Louie did it.
All right.
Second.
All right, Tom, Louie, was that you all or Louie? All right, Louie moved approval, Joni seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, no. Okay, these minutes are corrected with the correction of the Joe Irwin's name. Okay. And the next one would be HTCC twenty-five ten. Was this one that you had a comment on? No, Louie, not anyone else? Right, hearing that there's no corrections on these minutes, then I have a motion to approve the minutes for HTCC twenty-five ten.
Make a motion to approve the minutes for the hearing for HTCC twenty-five ten from August fourth as corrected.
Okay, and a second.
Second.
Second by Brittany, okay. Hey. Any additional comments? Hearing none. And all those in favor signify by saying aye. I oppose, no. Approved. And the next one is HTCC twenty-five eleven.
Make a motion to approve the minutes for hearing HTCC twenty-five eleven on August fourth as corrected.
Second. Second by Louie. Further comments or questions? Corrections, hearing none. All in favor signify by saying of the motion, signify by saying aye. I oppose, no. Pass of this. Okay, now we're up to the regular meeting minutes for August eleven. These were a little longer. Louie, this must be the one that you said you had a comment on.
Drum roll, please. You've been waiting all night for this. One little small change. Very last word says, Mr. Greenwell asked, I changed the word asked to motioned.
And on the first page, it's a workshop meeting. So twice.
No.
Those are the thirteen.
Yeah, it does say regular, I guess. I read right over that. I do that every time, I think, because I think I've missed that before. I think we all have.
Yeah.
Tom, you catch it.
I don't know why.
All right. So that's the correction it will make. Anything else? All right, then we'll have a motion to approve these minutes as corrected. The change of the word workshop and then Louie's change on the last page.
So moved.
Said it?
Yep.
All right, moved by Tom, seconded by Louie. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Right, all in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, no. All right. These minutes are approved for August the eleventh. And we're now at, we still have a few more minutes before we start the hearing.
Which hearing comes first?
It's HTCC twenty-five twelve. We scheduled it for seven forty-five. Well, just very quickly. Under new business, we have two items, one item, possible revisions in Article seventeen and eighteen to reflect changes in the O R C regarding public notices. Our current resolution has provision in it or statements in it that requires that it be posted in the basically the Delaware Gazette, it's the record of choice that trustees has have made in the past. But the, as you know, the rules were changed or the O R C was changed. And in order to have our resolution be consistent, we we should go ahead and make a change. And this was a draft that Scott had sent to me, but in it, this is not a draft that we'll be considering exactly, because I've already, I reviewed it and I asked him to make the change because in this draft, he basically still required it to be posted. And basically, if we change where the red wording is, notice of such hearing shall be posted on the township website as well as in the print or digital edition of one or more newspapers of general circulation in the township at least ten days before the hearing. We'll change that so that it would simply read, we could simply changing the wording, I said, well, why don't you just take out as well as and say and slash or? And it would be something that if the township chose to do it that way in the future, we could. But right, because the O R C lists that as an option. But we've already opted, the trustees opted, made the recommendation, and they are doing it as well as the B Z A and our office, we're posting it online. We're not no longer posting it in the Delaware Gazette, so that's the reasons for bringing this to your attention. Simple change, just to bring us in conformance. Well, it's not that we're not in compliance, it's simply a matter of bringing us in conformance in the sense of our language is reflects accurately what the O R C says.
Okay, so you want to change as well as to or?
Two, yeah.
To or, that's the only change you're suggesting from.
Yeah, that's the only one I saw in here in terms of the other changes. We can discuss these. In fact, we will at some point in the future, I'll put it on an agenda. But I wasn't planning on discussing it tonight. I just wanted to bring it to your attention.
One suggestion that we might consider is changing that to just say in accordance with O R C that the notice of such hearing shall be in accordance with O R C and just list the whatever the.
In section twenty-five oh eight, I'm not sure where you're.
In this, the place where you suggested changing it to as well as, I would say.
Oh, okay. Yeah, it's it's here in more than one place and I.
Just removing all of that in any place where we're talking about posting or making the public notices, we just say that we'll do it in accordance with. And we just list that O R C reference and and don't even say exactly how it's going to be done.
What you're suggesting is we delete that whole sentence up there and have him just put in notice of such hearing shall be in conformance with the Ohio revised code.
Yeah, that way, if that changes in the future, then we don't have to make any changes here.
You wanted to call out the exact chapter and verse or?
Maybe.
We should.
Might help. I doubt that would change in the future, but could.
The only problem with stating it that way, we're not telling the public what it is that we're going to do in our in our.
Not maybe not in the resolution, but on the website, we have all that listed and then the application, it has that, right?
Oh. We'll discuss potential changes. Anyway, I'll bring it to Scott so that the the version that we have then in the future will reflect whatever changes he brings to us at that. Okay. I thought we were done, but I forgot that the O R C changed and this is something that's been there for I don't know how many years.
A long time. A minor update.
Ever since I've been involved, for sure. So we will change it. Thank you, Louie. All right. Okay. I think it's, yeah, we can now recess our regular meeting and open the hearing on application HTCC twenty-five twelve, which is an application submitted by R S Eight Properties LLC and represented by Todd Ironman. I'm I'm sorry, I got this in your left.
Good evening. My name is Tony Ironman.
Tony's second.
Oh, okay, sorry. We're going to need to call a roll.
Yeah, I, we're not ready to start, Todd. I I just was identifying that you're going to be the representative.
Okay, I'm sorry.
See, maybe that misled you. We have to open the hearing and call the roll. We are, we recessed the regular meeting, recessed the regular meeting. Actually, would you call the roll to open hearing HTCC twenty-five twelve?
Mike Kavler.
Here.
Tony Manson.
Here.
Tom Need.
Here.
Brittany Hopper.
Here.
Lou Green.
Here.
All right, now the hearing is open and we will go through the process. Let me just briefly explain the process that we'll have that we will follow. We've called the role of the members. The zoning secretary or zoning assistant, Ashley Zaruba, is here. We don't have any other township officials present tonight. The purpose and rules that we will follow procedures tonight. Our purpose is to consider the application and make a determination as to whether it is in conformance with the Ohio, with our zoning resolution and master plan. Commission members will comment and or ask initial questions. There will be no public interaction at this time. When that part is finished, the public will have the opportunity to comment and or ask questions. During the public comment time, please observe the following procedures. If you wish to comment, please step up to the podium and introduce yourself at that time, state your name and your address. Only one person can speak at a time. Please be brief and be factual, and please do not bring up a point or a question that's been previously addressed. We also ask that you not interrupt the speaker or carry on your own conversations while the interviewer is speaking. When there are no further questions and or comments from the public, the public portion of the hearing will be closed. From that point on, no further public comments and or questions will be entertained unless recognized by the chair. Commission members will then have the opportunity to make any additional comments and or ask any additional questions. Ms. Zaruba, would you read the publication notice, please? Sorry, I thought you were ready.
You sometimes have me do it and sometimes don't.
You, yes, same here.
Always ready, but you don't ask. All right. Public notice, the Harlem Township zoning commission are being asked to consider the following. R S Eight Properties LLC at three six five five Miller Ball Road, Galena, Ohio, four three zero two one are seeking to rezone four twenty-nine nine five acres. Parcel number three one six two four zero zero one zero one four zero 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 from A R one to F R one. The hearing will be held on September second, twenty twenty-five at four forty, sorry, seven forty-five P M. At the Harlem Township Building, three eight eight three South State Route, six oh five, Galena, Ohio, four three zero two one. To view the application and accompanying documents, please visit us online at www.harlem twp.com. Hearing is open to the public. The hearing is also available on Zoom. Mike Kavler, Chair.
Thank you. The application was submitted on an old form, but we accepted it. Does anyone have any questions about that? We just revised and updated our form that's online, but this this works fine. Thank you, Todd. And has the applicant or agent signed the request? Yes. It is signed by the applicant and we do have a power of attorney for Todd Ironman. He serves as their representative tonight. And the specific zoning request, the specific zoning request is to change the current zoning of A R one to F R one. And the acreage to be rezoned is four point nine nine five acres. That's the gross acreage and also listed as a net acreage. Now, we're going to ask the zoning commission members, was the correct legal description furnished in text and map? Do they reinforce each other? There is the commission.
I noticed that while the text does include distances and bearings, the map has no bearings on it that I could find.
I had trouble with that, too.
I think they might be there, but the font is so small that they're they're not legible. They're not legible. They look like shrubs, maybe hedges.
I wondered about that, thank you. Are these supposed to be numbers that we can't read?
They're not legible, for sure. So that that's missing.
Okay.
Do you have a, do you want to direct a question to Mr. Ironman? Now, any member of the zoning commission?
I would prefer to have matching text in that since that is a legal requirement for us.
Yeah, that's that's definitely something that's missing from the from the review.
Though at this point.
The 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 plat that you submitted or the drawing that you submitted doesn't have the bearings, it has the distances on it, but it doesn't have any of the the degrees and the and the minutes that you would typically expect to see on a on a drawing that shows that tries to replicate that legal description.
I think the layer was either reduced or omitted, but it's it's correct.
It's not legible, yeah.
I tried to also use the other, another document that was a part of that, which was exhibit A. But I couldn't, I couldn't match anything else without one either.
Yeah, that 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 was the not the document that would match the text.
Yeah. I'm not sure why it was included.
The the second issue is there's a, there's two property owners that that likely did not get notified that should have been.
Because the entire property was not considered as a single.
Right, there's there's, I can pull, I can pull up the the map and share that if you'd like.
I also noticed that.
All right. Todd, what we're doing is as we're going through this, we're identifying some potential issues which we will want to be addressed. And we can won't be able to get that resolved tonight, but what we're, we won't necessarily reject the application at this point. But we'll go ahead and go through the process here. So far, we've identified that the map or the plat that's provided by the.
Court of Engineering.
Yeah, it's Court of Engineering, correct. That is not, does not have the bearings that were identified and those are needed on each of the constituents. And then what about the deed, folks? Satisfied with what we've got with the deed?
It does appear to be part of the, I mean, the the whole thirteen and a half acres.
Right.
Rather than.
Yes.
That's that's fine. That's the original.
The the parcel that's being proposed to be rezoned hasn't been subdivided yet, so it's there's no.
No, there won't be a deed for that parcel.
Just the larger deed looks like it works.
That's that's that was fine for me.
Well, the description that's provided really is for the, right now, what we've got is for the four point nine five nine nine five acres, which is the portion that's going to be rezoned.
Right, and that is the part that should have matched the map.
And it doesn't.
It doesn't.
Exhibit A that was part of the, is part of the deed is for the entire property.
Yes.
And and it's possible that those bearings and distances match, but we can't tell because there's no bearing on, there's no bearing in distances on this drawing that shows the larger.
So, right. That was my, I guess, my question in my mind as I was reviewing it, would these then match the large parcel?
We don't know.
It's the, I understand that we don't know.
Right.
Todd, do you know? I'm assuming that they must. It was, it was, it was submitted to the engineering office and they accepted it for for purposes of transfer of the property.
Exhibit A is the legal description?
Right.
Legal description and the plan were both drawn by court at the same time.
No.
Exactly.
Exhibit A is not that.
Is the legal description with the deed from twenty twenty-three.
This is from twenty twenty-three.
Is that the legal or is that the deed there?
Yeah.
The deed is for the entire thirteen point five acres.
Correct, and that legal description that accompanies that deed is said exhibit A. It's got the the engineer stamp of twenty twenty-three and that's.
For the entire thirteen and a half acres and that all the encumbrances on the thirteen and a half still apply to the four point nine acres, too.
Well, that's that's a separate question really, but the question is.
Go ahead.
Your, no, I mean, your question is, does that match deed? And I would say, yes, it did. I think, you know, the problem that I saw was that the the new plat was reduced so many times that that it's not led, that the the headings are not legible.
Right.
If they're on there, so we can't tell.
We'll get that, we'll get a better print of that.
Ideally, we we, this drawing would have everything on it to be able to show this legal description and the proposed zoning legal description, which is this one. It would have all the calls and all the bearings on it that would give us both of these in one drawing.
Okay.
That makes sense?
Yep.
I also didn't notice a calculation adjusting gross acreage to net acreage.
There is no calculation for the net acreage.
May I?
Yeah, go ahead.
First of all, let me introduce myself. I'm Tony Ironman with Ironman Planning. I apologize for getting a little bit too ambitious first time up, so it's my first time for Harlem Township and probably better part of thirty years or more, so I don't remember anybody here. I don't remember anybody here, and I don't even remember where I met, but the what was your question?
The question, well, the, the, the question, basically, I'll let Joni go ahead and come back.
But for an issue that we require a calculation showing the net acreage from the.
I, I spoke with the county engineer, and the question, the only real issue on the net acreage is the, the right of way.
Yes.
And, and the dedication of the right of way. And speaking with Representative from the County Engineers Office, they reminded me, which they didn't need to remind me, we have to go back through the lot split. At that point, they'll let us know if they're going to take the right of way or not. So what we did is we included it to the property line, which is the center of the road, knowing that when the lot split comes around, they may take the thirty foot.
That, that doesn't work for, for our hearing, though.
What we're asking for is a determination that if that is the only area that would be an impact, the net acreage, is that you would then take the four point nine nine five acres, calculate the road right of way and remove it from that and indicate then the net acreage to be rezoned. Our zoning resolution requires two, those two things for AR, FR one. The gross acreage and the net acreage.
Right.
I know we're kind of unique in the county.
No, you're not actually, and it's, it's, I, I understand it. I, I took the initiative to respond to that, exactly. And called the county engineer's office and was told when the lot split comes around, we'll let you know if we want the easement or not, or we want the right of way dedicated, or if in, in a lot of parts of the county, property owner still owns, even though it's rezoned, the property owner still owns the center of the road.
Yeah.
Correct.
And so, all they did is they kicked the key in down the road until the lot split comes around.
But there is a right of way.
Yes.
And it is sixty feet. So the assumption would be you would go, your property would go to the center of the road, not all the way across the road, unless the whole road is.
Right, so we would, we would, the county would take from us in a dedication thirty feet from the center of the road to the right of way line. However, they don't always do that.
When I looked.
It's not, that point is not relevant to our question or our issue, though. Our issue is we want you to make that calculation as though it were, in fact, well, it is in fact there. It is a right of way.
Right.
You can't go out on that right of way and build something.
Your, your, that's.
Even though you own it.
Right.
But, so what we're saying is because we have the net acreage requirement, we need to know how much acreage you're losing.
Okay, it's about three tenths of an acre, but I'll do the calculation.
Yeah, that's it. That's exactly what we want.
It isn't from a lack of effort, it's simply a lack of a decision at this point because the decision from the county engineer's office wasn't necessary. And so they, they delayed that decision, but what we'll do is we'll just submit the application for the next meeting and take, what if it's roughly three tenths of an acre, we'll take that off, so you have a a gross acreage of four point nine nine five and a
The net acreage.
Net acreage of whatever that.
Or, yeah, whatever it turns out to be.
Nine five or whatever it is.
Correct, that's, that's what we're asking for. All right. Going forward. We were talking about the adjacent adjoining contingent property owners. And Louis, you already identified, mentioned that there was a concern there.
Right, the, the, when, when this buffer is, is created, you have to take, if you own more, if the property owner or applicant has more than one property, you have to take
That are adjacent to each other.
That are adjacent to each other, you have to combine them and use that as your buffer.
We've seen that before.
That's our.
The other question I had for, for Mike, and I spoke with him about this, is we're only zoning the four point nine nine five acres. So if you put a two hundred foot buffer on the four point nine nine five acres, then there's only about three or four, four contacts.
Okay, first of all, the two hundred acre buffer is for
Two hundred feet.
Or two hundred feet, that's where for the BZA stuff is how they do it. For our regulations, we deal with adjacent contiguous across from is the wording that, that is used in the
Okay.
Language there.
And it specifies that if the property owner for the property that the zoning request is being submitted also owns surrounding property, that then would all be considered in terms of people that need to be notified.
You cannot be considered your own neighbor is what that comes down to.
And that basically.
One further.
So, so in, in, in this instance, there's only two additional property owners that would need notification, and it's this parcel here. This, this one that I highlighted, and then the one that, that since this, this one wasn't considered in your first calculation, this, this one that I'm looking at, you need to grab this guy across the street.
Harry Stein and.
Stein and, and Adams. Those are.
And that's because of owning the thirteen acres. Even though you're only going to requesting to rezone.
You've already captured all the other properties that you need.
Yeah.
In fact, you captured a few extras that you didn't need, but so.
All right, and if you will submit that as a, as a revision
Yep.
to your application, and then you can bring that in and initial the changes. And then we will utilize that as the revised application at that point.
Okay.
One, one other thing that I noticed on the, the four point nine nine five acre flat. I don't know if you have a copy of it there where you can follow along.
Okay.
So the from the true point of beginning in the southwest corner, you go, you go north, you go east, you go south, and then you go west of what's called out in the in the description, a distance of eight hundred and five point forty nine feet. What's shown on the map is only five hundred and forty five point fifteen. And so there's, it's not, so there's not just the headings, but there's a gap in the actual length of the, of the boundary in that case.
On the south, southeast corner, there's a, there's a dimension missing is what you're telling me.
Right.
Correct.
Got you. Well, it's missing both the dimension and the.
The bearing.
The bearing, yeah.
I didn't want you to think that all you had to do is get the bearings right.
Right. Thank you.
Okay. Anything else regarding the plat map or the notifying the neighbors?
If you have the easement done by then, attach it.
Absolutely, the, the, sir, it, it must be a good time to be a surveyor in state of Ohio because they're booked, and I, in speaking with the surveyor who performed this, I asked him to do the easement last week, probably there or two before regional planning's hearing. He's like, oh, we're eight weeks out. And I said, no, we, we can't do that. So he's going to get on as quickly as he can, and soon as I get it, I'll have it into Mike. And if I can get it in, I'll submit everything at one time, for sure.
Are easements part of our net acreage or no?
I don't, I don't know what.
It's just right of way, or is it easements, too?
Well, it, it says easements.
And, and right of way.
And that are, are part, that are recorded.
Yeah.
It specifies that it's record, has to be recorded. If it's not a recorded easement.
Yep.
It would have to be recorded.
Yes.
It's not an easement if it's not recorded.
But that will come out of the.
They may talk about it being an easement.
Right.
Right, but if it's not recorded legally.
Right, and it doesn't count. Yep.
Thank you.
Okay. So in terms of notifying, we've got two more folks that we will notify when we have those addresses. And what we can do is notify them of the date that we reset, recessed this hearing to. Any other errors that commission members would like to point out or ask a question about? All right, we have the recommendation from Delaware Regional Planning. And that was, is a recommendation that is a contingency recommendation. Staff recommended conditional approval of the rezoning request by RS eight properties LLC from AR one to FR one to the Delaware County Regional Planning Commission. Harlem Township Zoning Commission and Harlem Township Trustees, subject to the applicant providing evidence that adequate access can be obtained for the remainder of the six point eight five acres, and if the pond is to remain once the lot is split, an easement or maintenance agreement should be recorded to ensure the pond is adequately maintained. This motion, there was a motion made in pass to recommend conditional approval as recommended by the staff. Members of the commission, I think you have a copy of the recommendation.
Yeah. So do we know if those, well, there is sixty foot left over for the other six point. No, it's eight point five six acres.
Six, yeah, it's, it's more the remainder of six point eight five.
So sixty foot access is enough for.
Sixty foot's wide enough for a public road or a common access.
For a, a, a drive.
Oh, yes, they have to have a, an access drive, right, and that's what they're making reference.
Should be enough for.
In, in talking to regional planning about that, because I saw the conditions beforehand and spoke with both Scott and Brad. All they're looking for is an easement. They don't necessarily need a common access drive or a public road.
Yes.
I said, well, twenty five or thirty foot easement would take care of a driveway. That's all we need if we want to move something bigger later for a common access drive, which we don't.
For a flag lot, you need, what is it, sixty feet?
See, there is, there is sixty feet along the north that goes through the pond. That line does. What they're looking at is just an easement to get a driveway back to the back six acres. So in discussing that with regional planning, they said you don't need a common access drive unless you're plating it, you know, planning on a common access drive, and they said, we're not. He said, well, then just a drive easement is all you need.
But in this case, it would be a shared driveway because there's only two.
Just one. It's just a drive, it's an easement for a driveway for Ross Smith to get to the back six.
So no one else is going to use that driveway. No, no one else would use that.
And if they want to make, come back and make it a public road or a common access drive, then they'd have to go through the plating process anyhow for the cat.
Joni, what?
But, but, but as a flag lot, you do have.
We do have sixty feet platted.
That's, that's the question.
Yeah.
Right there.
Yeah.
Okay.
Because you needed the sixty feet to comply with zoning, if you don't have that, you, you can't get the zoning approved. And the county engineer's office will need to see, or will check with the zoning inspector into whether or not zoning requirements are being met.
Oh, yeah.
So I think what you're saying is that even though you have a sixty foot flag lot parcel.
If the zoning is, if the zoning is approved and the plats are approved, we'd have the sixty feet, yes.
You would have the sixty feet, but you're not going to use that for your, you're not going to actually use that for your driveway.
We'll use it back to the pond, and then we'll take a drive easement around the pond on the south side.
Yeah, and once you're back there. Okay.
Yeah.
There was one other misspelling of a name.
Uh huh.
Last name.
That's all, that's all on me because I'm a terrible typist.
It was only two letters.
Okay.
But just since we're going to be redoing it, we need to make sure we send it. It was property number seven. The recorder's office shows it, or the auditor's office, last name was Chalfan, C H A L F A N. And your application so shows C H A F L A, Chafland, instead of Chalfan.
But interestingly enough, the, the person who lives with them is, has a T on.
Has a T on the end, but, but it still does, and, and that one's correct. You've got the second one correct, but just not the first one, so if we're.
I'll get that fixed.
Fixing it, let's.
I, I plead fat thumbs.
It happens. I didn't catch it. Tom did.
Any other questions for Mr. Ironman here? Okay. At this point, then, let's open it up to the public for any questions or comments from the public concerning this request for rezoning. I know we have members of the public present, so some of you may come to the podium, state your name and your address, please.
I'm actually here for the next one, but Lexus with Plan for Land, he actually is one of our clients as well and a few other projects, but I was trying to help you out. For the NPA process, you don't really have to do the easements until you go through the lot split. For this, you really only have to do like the zoning exhibit, but to find the net acreage, Delaware County will require you to do a sanitary easement, even if there's not sanitary on the property, as well as drainage, if there's drainage problems, and then also the shared driveway. So when you go to do the net acreage and stuff. So Lexus Plan for Land, we're at one South Harrison Street, Ashley, Ohio, four three zero zero three. I was just trying to help them out a little bit, so. No questions.
Anyone else in the public that has a question or a comment relating to this rezoning request? All right, hearing none, then we'll close the public portion and come back to the commission members for questions, comments, and action at this point. Assuming that we will recess the hearing to a date and time certain. So.
Like, I'm curious, does, does their checklist appear online so that people can see what we're actually going to be looking for? And.
The checklist, I, I have to ask, Ashley, I haven't looked, I don't know. She revised it, I think.
Yeah. It is online, it is online, yeah.
The one from July twenty twenty five that we did.
The new one.
Yeah. There's all three of those issues.
He was going to put it up there, but I didn't go back and look. I don't, if, if any members of the commission looked to see if it's there.
Not recently.
The old one was there, I know.
I just, just wanted to point out that the, the three issues, main issues that we've pointed out so far.
Are on the checklist.
As, as, as what can result in rejection of an application if they're not there.
But I thought we were no longer rejecting things, we were just recessing them.
We're recessing it. If it's not addressed, that would be different.
Checklist that's online is the seven twenty twenty five.
Okay, that's what I've got here.
That checklist, I've been updated with the new application because it probably, I thought I went through the whole checklist, so.
Yeah, you may have used the previous checklist before the new one was online.
It wasn't much different, though.
No, in terms of the issues that the three issues I think that Joni is pointing out, those are not new. They weren't added to this checklist. They were in the old one as well.
There's an application that is also dated July twenty twenty five. There's an application, there's the checklist, and then there's a procedural guidelines that kind of explains kind of more descriptive form how to fill out each box, so those three pieces. Pull those down.
Now, I will say that these may not have been on there when he started writing up their application because we received this on August fourth. And the trustees, I don't know if they had approved it yet. I think it was at their, like, that next week's meeting, so I don't think they were online yet, so he was probably going off the old stuff.
Yeah.
Just looking at the dates, that's, that would be my guess.
Yeah, there weren't a whole lot of changes, though.
The more had to do with the payments.
No, like I said.
Yeah, the payments were changed.
You now know what the expectations are, all right? So let's set a time. So let's set a time um a date and a time for um. Recessing to.
I guess one question would be how long you need to. Get this finished on your side.
Get the plat plan. Resolved and fixed as soon as possible.
Well, the earliest it could be will be October.
Tell me what date works for you in October and that's plenty of time.
First Monday in October.
We already, we already have two hearings.
Two hearings already scheduled.
Will that allow you enough time to get through the county, what you need to get through with them?
Yeah.
Okay.
We can schedule it for uh, let's see, what do we have on the?
The sixth, we already have two hearings.
We'll do the next one.
Uh I don't know, the packets are real thick, but I haven't looked at them yet.
Uh yeah, the the one hearing.
Can him.
Um. I don't know what the progress has been on that one. We said it, gave them. Like two months to address the issues that they had. If they. I haven't heard anything about it, whether or not they're going to make a an additional request for it to be delayed further. The other one, there's no. Then I'm not aware of any significant issues that had been with that. The reason it was moved to October the sixth is because that was requested. Property owners were going to be out of town, out of the country, in fact, for part of September. So um we could schedule it, but it would need to be, we'd start it late.
I prefer to do the work, do it at the workshop meeting in case those other two hearings.
Yeah, we could move it to the eleventh. That that was. Well, I'm sorry, the thirteen.
It'll be the fourteenth?
Yeah.
Well, the third.
It's the thirteenth.
Is Columbus Day? Does that matter?
Is that an observed?
We have not typically observed Columbus Day.
I didn't, I wasn't. I happen to see it on my calendar. It's only.
Is it an official holiday for the trustees?
All right, then we'll do it the thirteenth.
Then we could do it on the thirteenth.
Not that I know of, they may work on it, so. I'm assuming.
Yeah.
All right, so let's schedule it then for uh. October thirteenth.
Seven forty five.
At uh seven forty five.
Motion.
All right, Tony.
Sounds great. Thank you.
Uh yes, now we'll need uh, go ahead. Were you going to make the motion, Joni?
Um.
Oh, sure, I can make a motion. You want me to make a motion? Um I make a motion to recess the hearing of HTZ C twenty five dash twelve. To October, oh, wait a minute, thirteen at seven forty five P M.
Okay. And a second.
Second.
Seconded by Louis. We have a a mo- a motion to recess this hearing to October thirteenth, seven forty five P M. Any further discussion? Hearing none, and all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Hey, we are in recess on this hearing until October thirteenth. Thank you, Tony. Well, you are. Well, uh that means that um what we're going to do should go. Pretty quickly.
That's even already seen.
Okay, we're temporarily uh I'm talking, so that means we're back in the regular meeting, but we will. Go out of recess and open the hearing uh for the next item that's on the agenda here. Which will be uh the hearing. Uh on HTZ C twenty five oh nine, requested by Christopher and Misty Lee Muirfield. But. The representative is Joe Klase or. Plan for Land. So it's Joe's not here tonight. You're representing Plan for Land, correct? Would you go ahead and uh? When I caught, once we open the hearing and then get the roll called, then I'll ask you to identify yourself, please. All right, Ashley, would you call the role, please?
Mike Kavler.
Here.
Johnny Manson.
Here.
Tom Need.
Here.
Brittany Hopper.
Here.
Lou Green.
Here.
Okay, the hearing on application H D C. E C twenty five oh nine is now in session. And would you go ahead and introduce yourself as a representative uh for the property owner? Uh Christopher Muirfield and Misty Lee Muirfield.
Yes, Lexus Thornton, Plan for Land. Our address is one South Harrison Street, Ashley, Ohio, four three zero zero three.
All right, thank you. Now, for the record, um we are redoing this as a hearing that was held previously on August the fourth. And. We don't have any members present here tonight. Do we have anyone or members of the public, that is?
Bob Singer, and then you've got somebody that's identified as fifteen oh two four. I don't know who that is, but.
Oh, okay, we've got someone online with a number. If you uh would identify yourself and provide us with your address, you can do that either via text or verbally. You have to unmute yourself. Are you getting a text?
See.
No, no chat.
Nothing in the chat.
All right. Well. Wait a minute.
Oh, I was like, oh, we got someone else.
I just asked them who they who they are. In the chat.
I can't see it from here. Sir. I heard the beep that.
That that.
That was just actually, okay. That because I can't read it. Okay. Well, since we uh went through the uh complete process of the hearing previously. Uh that.
What's that?
The.
Yeah.
Oh.
Cause you're fifteen oh two four asked, who is fifteen oh two?
Forgot that I was on.
Okay. No public.
The name of this company. As two of myself was.
How'd that happen?
Can you see his bomb there?
That's priceless.
He's. He's on, but he's.
Gonna rename myself.
All right.
He even says her name.
I know, for some reason.
Okay, well, we're redoing uh this hearing. Because of the uh notice um. That was sent to the adjacent uh and across from property owners had the wrong date. So we wanted to make sure that the property owners had. Have been informed of the hearing, and if there were any questions or concerns that uh we would provide the opportunity for them to participate in this hearing. We have no one present in the room, and apparently there's no one present online.
Bob Singer.
Um.
Bob Singer's online. Yeah.
Bob Singer's there.
What? I'm the one.
That's the blue screen.
Except he was also present the last time we did these. It's all.
Yes, Bob, do you have any questions?
I do not.
All right, thank you. Um, well, one of the things that uh as we addressed this, we went through all of the. Uh concerns. That um there may have been and determined that. The. Excuse me, the application is on the correct form, and the applicant or agent had signed the form. Um a specific zoning request was to change from um AR one. To FR one, and then we discovered that there was on this property. Um an issue with the. Part a parcel. Land that was a part of the, excuse me. Uh Harlem Township, I'm sorry, the Harlem Village. Area. And asked that that be addressed. The discussion was that these this. Lot was going to be vacated. And we passed a motion to the effect that uh. We would approve it conditionally. Uh with a statement being submitted by Mr. Klase regarding this property and. I think that what we have now, we actually have that.
We have been de- designated, but I'm not sure it says anything about vacating the.
We actually have to vacate it through regional planning, so we're working on that now. Our surveyors drawing up, they have to draw up the original plat for the village. Um and then we have to go through the vacation process. It's just administrative, so re- regional planning, it's like a five hundred dollar fee.
But uh we don't have a written statement then tonight stating what you just told us. Am I am I correct?
We are vacating it. That is my verbal statement, but I don't know if it's, it's probably the regional planning had it as a recommendation for vacation. On as conditional approval, so we can't do anything. To the property until we vacate it.
We understand that, but we did have a motion passed which asked for Plan for Land. To submit a written statement explaining this.
I was not aware of that, but.
And that's what I thought we were going to have tonight, and we wouldn't have to then make the rep. We still need to take some action tonight, but we can go back and use the motion that we used previously.
Still stands up.
Uh we have it in the minutes from uh that hearing. Uh let's see, where did I put those minutes?
Also, I have a question before you do that. Um it was Chris Muirfield's property in Misty and also Raymond Kaiser site on the corner. So it should have been both of them. Are in the plaque.
We'll do the Kaiser one separate from this.
It wasn't online, is what I'm saying. Only this one.
Okay.
Yes, that we have to deal with each of these separately. They were separate.
Separated online is what I'm.
But we did notice at the the last hearing that Raymond Kaiser was not on the neighboring properties list.
He is deceased. It is Heather. Is his trustee, so.
Heather Jackson.
Yes.
Okay. Is there anything new or additional questions that zoning commission members may have regarding these application, this application, I shouldn't say these. We're only dealing with the application HTZ C twenty five oh nine. All right, hearing none, then uh. Mr. Need. Would you like to make the same motion?
Uh I move that we recommend approval to the Harlem Township Board of Trustees. Uh that application HTZ C twenty five dash oh nine uh be rezoned from AR one to FR one. Under the condition that. Uh the packet that goes to the trustees. Explains that the. That a portion of the parcel. Um currently zoned. HC HCVR dash one will be vacated.
Second.
And it was seconded by Brittany again. All right, so with that motion on the floor, any further discussion? All right, hearing none, then all in favor of the motion uh as stated and recorded by Mrs. Ruba. Uh would I? You indicate with a roll call vote, please.
Mike Kavler.
All right.
Johnny Manson.
Hi.
Tommy.
All right.
Brittany Hopper. Lou Green.
All right, okay, motions approved. Um. And this will then be recommended to the trustees with that condition, and it's the same. As we told Joe last month.
Bring it safe and I'll make sure that we'll have that in there for.
Yeah, it needs to be in submitted to Ashley.
Yeah.
Yeah, doesn't need to come to us. It needs to go to Ashley so she can put it in the packet when she references to what goes to the trustees.
I'll have it actually for Ashley. I I would actually like a copy of that for my file here, too.
I'll put it on the shared document. I can print it out, too, and put it in your folders.
Okay, that takes care of that. Um. And then we could have a motion to adjourn the hearing on HTZ C twenty five oh nine. Okay, moved by Louis and seconded by.
Okay. Brittany.
Brittany. So we have adjourned the um hearing on HDZ C twenty five oh nine, and now we're ready to go forward to the next ones. Which is uh. HTZ C. Twenty five ten. And we will open the hearing then on HTZ C twenty five ten. Mrs. Ruba, would you call the role, please?
Mike Kavler.
Here.
Johnny Manson.
Here.
Tom Need.
Here.
Brittany Hopper.
Here.
Lou Green.
Here.
Hey, the hearing for twenty five ten is now in session. Since we've already had discussions about this one, and let's see, does twenty five ten?
There's no.
This one had, this one didn't have a uh a contingency on it.
Thanks.
Good to go.
Any issues, any questions, anything that we need to review? Again, members of the public, if you have any questions, please, we'll open it for public questions and comments. Done this twice now, so we're trying to just make sure we're providing the public the opportunity if they have. Any questions about the changes on.
Nobody else joined online.
There's no one online, and we have no public presence.
Ten, uh Louis on now, but.
If there's no contingencies on this one, and um going back now, public session is closed. Members of the commission, any questions? If not, a motion on this application would be appropriate.
I'll make the motion to recommend approval to the Board of Trustees for application HTZ C twenty five ten. Um. Yeah, two. What was that? Recommend most, yeah, a motion to recommend approval to the Board of Trustees for this uh application.
All right, sec- uh moved by Joni, seconded by.
Second.
Louis. Right? Any further discussion? Hearing none. Then again, please call the role.
Mike Kavler.
All right.
Johnny Manson.
Hi.
Tom Need.
Aye.
Brittany Hopper. Hi, Lou Green.
All right.
Okay, uh application HTZ C twenty five ten uh is recommended for approval to the trustees. And now a motion to adjourn the hearing on HTZ C twenty five ten would be appropriate.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Louis, seconded by Brittany. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, that hearing is adjourned, and now we will go to the third one, which is application HTZ C twenty five eleven. And again, we'll open the hearing on that application, and I would ask um. Mrs. Ruba to call a role again.
Mike Kavler.
Here.
Johnny Manson.
Here.
Tom Need.
Here.
Brittany Hopper.
Here.
Lou Green.
Here.
Okay, so now we're in hearing, open the hearing on application HTC twenty five eleven. Again, we are reconducting this hearing to provide the opportunity for uh the neighbors to have received now the notification and giving them the opportunity to. Ask questions or participate in the discussion if they have. And this hearing, same as uh evident at this point, we don't have any members of the public present. And the only member of the public present online is Bob Singer. Bob, do you have any questions?
I have none.
Thank you, sir. All right, members of the commission, back to this one now. What is the pleasure on this one? We've already discussed all the issues relating um. To this application with the previous application HTC. Twenty five oh nine and at the previous hearing as well on August the fourth.
So there were some other things that um we had talked about. I just wanted to see if. Those will be corrected on the version that goes to the trustees. And those were that there were multiple parcel numbers that were incorrect. On the neighboring properties. Work sheets.
Get that corrected.
And and also number fifteen had the wrong address. It's probably just a typo, but it's was still wrong.
Change that as well. Change that as well.
It does get corrected yet?
They have not. I was unaware. They said number fifteen, wrong address.
Correct, it should have been fifty-eight eighty instead of fifty-eight seventy, and also the parcel numbers on uh. Uh, what was it?
You should actually be able to see the uh, the minutes. Yeah, everything's outlined in the minutes.
Yeah, I will get those changed.
Eight, fifteen, seventeen.
Actually, it's number seven as well.
I'll answer that every single one and make sure that they're accurate.
Those, yeah, what Mr. Needs pointed out is that it's in the minutes, so you can check that.
Yeah.
And um, you know, it, it, for the uh, for the trustees packet, it can be the same statement, just has to reference twenty-five eleven. You know, the Kaiser.
One letter, that's okay.
But this map should go in with one application, the other map.
Any other questions or comments? All right, then with that understood, uh, there's no additional questions or comments forthcoming. Uh, a motion on um this application would be appropriate. Tom, you.
I will, uh. I move that we recommend approval to the Harlem Township Board of Trustees for application HTCC 25 dash eleven. With rezoning from uh AR one to FR one under the condition that the packet that goes to the trustees. Uh, explains the vacation of the HCVR zoning on that, on that parcel.
I'll second.
Okay, moved by Mr. Needs, seconded by Mr. Greenwell. Any further discussion on the motion? All right, hearing none, then uh again, Mrs. Ruba, would you call the roll?
Mike Cavler.
Hi.
Johnny Manson.
Hi.
Tony.
Hi.
Brittany Hopper. Lou Greenwell.
All right. All right. So that motion has passed. We will be recommending to the trustees approval of application HTCC 2511. And a motion to adjourn this hearing would be appropriate.
So moved.
So moved by Mr. Greenwell and seconded by.
Second.
Brittany. All right, uh.
Thank you.
All in favor of uh adjourning the uh hearing, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, that hearing is adjourned. Thank you for coming, and remember, just submit that to Ashley.
I just sent you, I just sent you the minutes for that. We'll have all those edits.
And, and thank you for being here because without you present, we couldn't have done this.
It's like, wait, I gotta come back, but it's okay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, that brings us. Yes, you have those? I was just about to ask for those, thank you.
Of each paper looked thing.
Um.
We have one more, right?
The industrial, yeah.
Yeah, you haven't done that one yet.
Okay. All right, we have one more hearing. So many papers. Okay.
We get first kids on the other.
Now we have one last hearing. And this hearing is on uh application HTCC 2513, Amendment of Article Seventeen, Industrial District. Which we have requested, meaning the Harlem Township Zoning Commission. So with that, I would like to call this hearing to order, and again, Mrs. Ruba, would you call the roll?
Mike Cavler.
Here.
Johnny Manson.
Here.
Here.
Brittany Hopper. Here.
Here. Okay, so the hearing is now in session on application HTCC 2513. Uh, which is Amendment of Article Seventeen, Industrial District. Uh, we received the final uh version uh submitted to Ashley, which will be the one that we'll uh, we'll reviewing here tonight. And will be the one that'll be forwarded to the trustees for approval. And we do have the application. Um, and we do have the recommendation from, sorry, you have something to pass over? Okay, we do have the recommendation from the township, uh, I'm sorry, from the Regional Planning Commission. And uh their recommend, staff recommendation uh is uh approval of the text amendments to the Harlem Township Zoning Resolution. To the Delaware County Regional Planning Commission, Harlem Township Zoning Commission, and Harlem Township Trustees. And Mr. Price made a motion to recommend approval, and it was approved by a unanimous vote. Uh, from the Delaware County Regional Planning Commission, so that's the recommendation that continues to go forward. Uh, is there any reason for any other discussion? If not, we can have a motion to move this forward.
The only thing I wanted to call out on page four, noise is underlined in red for some odd reason.
Noise.
Other than that, everything is captured, so thank you, Scott.
Page four.
Change in that?
I didn't notice.
No, I just don't know why it's underlined in red.
Probably it was a carryover accidentally.
Everything else is good.
It weren't, what, on my copy, I don't see anything red, page four.
It's underlined. Underlining is red. Just the underlined.
Oh, I'm got you, sorry, just the word noise underlined in red.
Not terribly relevant, but just seemed odd.
It's the little sparkle in the resolution.
Yeah.
Little Easter egg in there.
Just to bring attention to it.
Yeah.
Right, cuz.
Well.
Cuz why not?
More important than you.
Supposed to be a clean copy. It is a clean copy, but that red shouldn't be there.
Clean it up, clean it up to both of them.
All right. Other than that particular item then for correction, is there anything else? And a motion on this to move it forward?
We move that the Harlem Township Zoning Commission recommend to the Harlem Township Board of Trustees that application HTCC 2513. With text revisions for Article Twenty-seven, Industrial District be approved.
And is there a second?
Um, is that article?
Article Seventeen.
Seventeen.
Seventeen, sorry, what did I say?
It's seventeen.
Might have said.
You said twenty-seven.
It's seventeen.
Oh, I'm sorry, I missed.
Seventeen.
Yeah, it is seventeen, yeah. I'm, I was hearing what I wanted to hear, I guess.
I'll, I'll second that motion.
All right, moved by Joni, seconded by Louis. Further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, and uh all in favor, please do a roll call vote, though.
Mike Cavler.
Aye.
Johnny Manson.
Bye.
Tony.
All right.
Brittany Hopper. Here. Lou Greenwell.
Okay, the motion to recommend approval on Article uh Seventeen, Application HTC 2513. Is approved. But with that in mind, a motion to adjourn this hearing would be appropriate.
So moved.
Moved by Louis, seconded by Brittany. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Okay, we are adjourned in that hearing, and then going back to the agenda. There's only one item left on the uh agenda under new business, and that's the uh alternate vacancy on the Township Zoning Commission. We do have one person who has expressed an interest in that. And uh she actually submitted an employment application. Maureen is noted.
Oh, isn't she part of the uh?
And you know, what we've indicated, I mean, I wasn't contacted, she didn't contact me about it, and if she had, I would have told her all she needed to do was to submit a. Uh, an email or a letter requesting to be appointed, but she found this online, the position was posted online. So she acted accordingly. She filled out an application and submitted it to the trustees, and of course, it's the trustees who will approve it. I just wanted to make sure everyone was aware of that. Maureen's been active with the uh latest version of the strategic planning activities. And I guess she's chairperson, right, Tom?
Yes, Tom. Yes, she's chair of the steering committee.
Is that a conflict of interest?
The steering committee is almost done.
Oh, okay.
And she may have had that in mind when she, I don't know, cuz I read, I guess I've seen here somewhere. That uh she was looking at starting in October. Uh, maybe the, the intent is for that committee to be.
Yeah.
Have, to have completed its work.
I think that's, I think October is like the end spot for them, so that would work.
Yeah, I think that committee was supposed to not be made up of any township employees.
That is correct.
They probably, if, if the trustees take action on that, they'll probably say that once, once her role is complete with the steering committee, then she'd be available to roll on to some alternate.
Yeah, because we did have, when we, when the other strategic planning committee was active, Tom was on the committee, and he was representing the zoning commission. But this particular group, as you just described, so.
They requested that.
That no be involved.
Right.
So if we may have to make changes to the comprehensive plan. Then would that again be a conflict of interest if that person who helped create that is then voting on it as well, potentially?
No.
No.
Wouldn't see that as a conflict.
As I was on the planning committee for the two thousand seven version of, of the comprehensive plan.
Well, Tom was part of the strategic planning committee, and we voted on.
I don't see that there, that there would be any, you know, conflict of interest. If, if there's a conflict of interest, it's up to the individual then to. Identify that for themselves, or if someone on the commission thinks it's a conflict of interest, they can point it out to that person.
If she owned property that was being considered for something, then I think she'd probably have to raise her hand and say, I need to not be a part of that decision, but.
But I think.
I think that's the only place the conflict would show up.
Hmm, actually, even that, I mean.
We all own.
We all own property in township, we've all had overlays that we've talked about and voted on.
It was like, she had a three hundred acre parcel, that there was an overlay district for just her, it was something very specific, I could see a conflict, but.
Yeah, I mean, I see that, that having been on the steward committee and having gone through a lot of land use discussion and, and uh, having thought about it. She wants to be able to continue to do that.
Yeah, no, I think that's, that's fine. I was just asking the questions.
Yeah, I think it's legitimate, yeah. The little bit I know about, I mean, I've sat through some of the steering committee meetings, uh, she grows very tasty grape tomatoes and we're selling them at the uh. At the farmer's mom's.
She has lots of vegetables, she has lots of vegetables and flowers, a large, large garden.
Yeah, peppers, um. Uh, so, uh, but she seemed very, uh, very, very steady, very organized, and uh.
Yeah, well, I just want to make sure everyone was aware of, um, John Trainer sent me the information. To bring it to my attention that she had expressed an interest.
She actually sent me a copy of her.
Great.
Application.
Oh, did she?
That'll be nice to have another alternate.
That's what I told her.
Yeah.
I don't know whether she, did she contact you before she submitted it to, to the trustees? I mean, not that you, I'm just curious.
She submitted it to John Trainer and myself. And I think she just wanted comments from me, which I gave her. And, and John, of course, would then took it, I think, to the trustees.
Send it out to me, and it out to you guys and to Mike to get it out to you guys.
I don't know whether they're going to put it on um for consideration in September or not. But John indicated that they couldn't do it in August, and it was because of.
They got it like the same day, yeah.
Yeah, it'll probably be on the September, I don't know, so. Have a few weeks to work on that one.
Yeah, there's at least two more weeks, right?
Yeah, it'll, it'll go on there, I'll work on it here soon.
Um, so we've, and it might be very timely to get another alternate appointed. Because I've been advised by Alan, he's considering uh resigning.
Oh.
Because he's, he's missing a lot. And uh his workload.
When we think we had a full plate.
Ah, I know.
I, uh, I'm trying to point that out to him that maybe our plate won't be as overflowing as it has been in terms of our work, so.
I mean, we still appreciated the input he has had when he's here, so.
Yeah, I'm, so I've, I've encouraged him not to resign, so whether he hasn't made that decision, he just.
Even if he can't make all the meetings.
Right, that's what I've told him.
He was also very instrumental on helping me set up the SharePoint for the commission and for BCA.
Yeah, I think he has a lot of good ideas in terms of efficiency and stuff.
Yeah, he was great. He, I mean, him and I worked, he called and came in and really helped me get SharePoint up and running for me to send you guys stuff. He was huge a help on that.
It'd be nice.
Good for you, yeah. So, um.
Alan, are you listening?
Right. I'll make sure to send him this video specifically.
Don't go.
Please start listening at.
Thank you.
Go ahead. Uh, before we adjourn, um, I sent everyone an email about a, a process diagram. Ashley printed out the diagram, so I'm just gonna pass it around. We, there's no need, we're not gonna talk about it tonight. I just wanted you to have it in paper so you can look at it. Um, mark it up, and then at some point, we'll talk about it at a future meeting.
Thanks.
I wasn't sure if you wanted to transite.
Yeah, that's, that's great, cuz people can at least have it to mark up or whatever it's in. Yeah, I've been thinking about this for a while, a process diagram that shows the general public how things happen, who, who takes it and what take, and where does it go after it leaves us, and then it goes someplace else. What's missing from this is some timelines, like I know there's, when we get an application, there's within a certain amount of time, it has to come before us, or then after we do it, it has to go to the trustees, so there's. Putting some time, some schedule to this, I think would also be helpful.
Then there's a time that you have to wait before it can actually go in the books in case anybody wants to take it to referendum and stuff.
Yeah, yeah, and that whole referendum process, I don't really know what that is cuz I've never experienced it, so putting that on here, or, or having like a, a little box that says. Potential referendum, and then there's a different sheet that says what that looks like, maybe fitting it all in here might be too much, but just. Having a flow to share with people, so they're.
Yeah, thank you.
Informed. That was all.
I think it's a good idea.
We can talk about it in a separate meeting.
To have like the specific referendum on there, because a lot of people don't know what that process looks like, and it is a lot more than what I expected, I heard about it.
Yes, a very good point. Uh, we have one, uh, but it basically is not specific within the township.
Right.
It shows the whole, all the steps, so it makes reference to the zoning commission, but then it doesn't show it breakdown once it gets.
Yeah, this type of chart is good because it shows who, like which, wh, wh, what group is making the decision, or what group gets it next after it leaves here, where does it go, and then it comes back to us, or it goes back to the applicant, or.
Very good.
Just something that.
This is the applicant appear, and then it comes down to us. Um, you've got a question here. After we conduct the hearing, significant errors or issues, no, if the answer is yes. I'm just wondering in terms of, um, I mean, like tonight, the action taken was to recess. Is that what you're thinking of as an action there?
It could be, yeah.
Or were you thinking in terms of gay or nay?
No, no, that, that's obviously a step, that, that app, the application is incomplete, so. We recess and it has to go back through the cycle again, it has to go back to the applicant, and they bring it back to us.
It goes backward.
Right, then, then at some point, we do make a decision, does it go to the trustees, or, well, it always goes to the trustees, but we make the decision. Or we make the recommendation to approve or not approve, and then, then they make their decision.
Correct.
And then it goes where it goes from there.
Okay.
Yeah. It's simpler when it gets to the trustees. It's simpler when it gets to the trustees.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Yeah.
Um. We can put, plan on working on this at some point in terms of, uh, yeah, I think it would be great to go ahead and put it, get something in place. And um, becomes then part of our pers- of, of our procedures and describing them. I mean, these are the steps, they're already there.
Right.
But we don't have anything like this that shows it.
It's kind of a visual.
Yeah. And a graphic like that, it's usually easier for people to grasp and understand. Anything else? Before we adjourn? Okay, and with that in mind, a motion to adjourn tonight's regular meeting.
I make a motion to adjourn.
You're gonna do that? Is there a second?
I'll say it.
And Louis seconded. All right, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Closed? That's good, see, we finished at nine o'clock.
I did not, I expected to be here until like ten o'clock.
I also did.
It's like you're gonna, it's gonna be a long one.